Let's see, would I mute? Why don't we go ahead and get started and we'll note the person whose picture is missing. Mute, mute, mute. How's that? So, Mike, we'll look forward to seeing you soon. Good evening, everybody. We'll now open the August 26, 2020, meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. Can the staff take roll? We'll recognize that Mr. Courtwright is not visible but is on the call. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from July 8th and July 22nd? Are there any questions or additions or comments? None being heard will approve those. Mr. Meesmer, is there any correspondence for us?
Mr. Chair, I'll defer the correspondence to Ms. Graich who will give us an update on the look ahead Planning Commission agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Meesmer, Chair, and members of the Commission and the public. I'm just going to try and share my screen again and see if that works here. Can everybody, can everybody see the schedule?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. I'm not able to tell what I'm sharing, so I'll have to take your word for it. So, planning staff wanted to provide the Planning Commission with a nice look ahead of what to expect in the upcoming weeks as far as Planning Commission meetings go. So, we've put together this schedule for you to kind of, so you can plan and think about what's coming up. So, tonight, we're here to discuss the SMP periodic updates and Mr. Alex Capron with the Watershed Company is here to lead us through a discussion and presentation on the draft amendments. In September, the Planning Commission is going to be very, very busy with four different land, quasi judicial land use permit applications. So, we've got two public hearings on each of the Planning Commissioners' dates in September. So, we'll be taking a little break from the Shoreline Master Program for about a month. And then, we'll come back in October, on October 14th, and finish up our discussion regarding the draft amendments to the SMP. October, November, the rest of October and November, we don't have anything else scheduled yet, so you might get a little breather there. And at this point, we're projecting the public hearing, the joint public hearing for the SMP periodic update to occur on December 9, 2020. And that's tentative at this point, just because there's a couple of different things that have to fall into place to be able to have that meeting on that date. But, we're hoping, we're aiming for that date at this point. And that's as far as we go ahead, so just wanted to give the Commission an update on that. Do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you, Ms. Graich.
Welcome.
Shall we move on to old business?
So, as part of old business, this is continued discussion with the Commissioners about the proposed draft amendments to the Shoreline Master Program. At the last Commission meeting, there was interest in going through a detailed review of each of the proposed amendments. So, we've asked Alex Capron with the Watershed Company to come and lead our discussion and provide a presentation to the Commissioners. So, I'm going to turn it over to him, but please feel free to stop and make comments and ask questions throughout his presentation. And with that, I will introduce Alex.
All right. Thanks a lot, Libby. Get the screen showing here. All right, can everybody see my screen there? Oh, let's see here. All right, so, we've got the first of two, two meetings discussing the Shoreline Master Program periodic update. And really, the format of these meetings will be following the gap analysis chronologically. So, we'll look at a, a lot of these amendments, I'll be talking through with you, they'll show the actual code amendments on the screen, and then, I'll be discussing the approach, how we arrived at that amendment. And, yeah, the gap analysis itself here, it's split up into, you know, four different categories. One, looking at consistency with state law, also looking at critical area regulations, so the ones in the SMP currently, and then, the ones the city plans to adopt. So, adopting those by reference within the SMP and what that looks like, as well as capturing changes to the comprehensive plan, development regulations, and then, additional issues there to consider. And so, those were identified by, yeah, both staff and the Watershed Company. And so, yeah, by splitting this up into two meetings, we're favoring a lot of the amendments and work on this first meeting. So, this is broken down by looking at legislative amendments, looking at consistency with state law. There are about 27 of them, and of those, yeah, roughly half were brought into the SMP, also looking at, as I mentioned, critical areas, and then, shoreline environment designations, so possible changes there to consider, and updates to code references within the SMP to capture current zoning code. Both definitions within Title 19, and then, any definitions to add or refine within the SMP, and looking at proposed aquaculture provisions, and then, the codification process will round out this meeting. And so, then, with meeting two, yeah, we'll look at building height code provisions within shoreline jurisdiction, also looking at vegetation conservation standards, so tree trimming and the like, and then, you know, dock and repair provisions, so, yeah, we'll dive into that a little more. And then, also, the percent slope calculation for conservancy and shoreline residential designations, so that's looking at impervious surfaces within these two designations as a maximum based on the percent slope. And then, yeah, looking at a prioritized restoration plan, and then, a minor amendment to the cumulative impacts analysis for that second meeting. All right, so to start off with legislative amendments, I did include a lot of screenshots, but not all, not every legislative amendment has a code snippet screenshot. But, to start with the cost threshold for the difference between substantial development and a shoreline exemption, it's that dollar figure updated to, yeah, a little over $7,000. And that actually also has a automatic update that's referenced in the RCW 90.58.030, so that has, the Office of Financial Management updates that cost, that number will be automatically So, another cost threshold increase as part of a legislative amendment was doing both freshwater dock replacement and dock repair along freshwater. And so, you'll notice that the state provided more flexibility for replacement versus a newly constructed pier along a, along a lake. So, yeah, those dollar figures have just been updated there verbatim. And that also includes the RCW reference as well. Right, so, the development definition, so the key change here is that development won't include dismantling or structural removal unless if it's part of an associated development application. And so, yeah, I mean, this makes sense in terms of a change because it is a functional lift of shoreline ecological functions if you're taking structures out of shoreline jurisdiction. So, as part of that, what that, what that creates is that you do a shoreline exemption as opposed to a substantial development permit if you're just dismantling a structure. Looking at gooey duck aquaculture, so the, basically, the wild harvest of any gooey duck doesn't meet the definition of aquaculture. So, as this use is right now in the aquatic designation, it's outright prohibited. And so, you know, the state is looking to allow more flexibility with wild harvest to help, yeah, help local communities and also, yeah, any state managed systems. Yeah, so that's, that is just a minor amendment to the aquaculture definition. And so, that means that if there aren't any changes to the aquaculture provisions, that this in-water form of aquaculture would still allow to, allow to exist if it's a wild harvest of gooey duck. And then, this is just kind of a high-level summary of the remaining legislative amendments. So, exceptions not required for local review, so that includes any wash-dotmates projects, also NPDS stormwater upgrades for shipyards. And then, relating to the shoreline restoration, so this is allowing, as an applicant comes in with a, a development application, if they're including shoreline restoration that results in a landward shift to the ordinary high watermark, they won't have a further constrained site than, you know, if ordinary high watermark is shifting in, their setbacks won't continue to, you know, constrain that, that development. Yeah, so it's relief to applicants that are either directly affected or as part of that restoration activity. Now, the moratorium authority, so that's outlined in the public process for a, for a use ban in shoreline jurisdictions, so that, those provisions have been added. And, I mean, there's, yeah, a direct reference to the WAC, the Washington Advisory Code with that. And the floodway definition, so it is adding the RCW reference for a biological way to identify the floodway. So, currently, the SMP has references floodway for FEMA mapping, and so, this biological definition is just another way to delineate a floodway within shoreline jurisdiction. Also, yeah, nonconforming definitions, so those were added to the Chapter 12 of the SMP, and I think it was specifically nonconforming use that was added, so slot and structure were already part of the SMP. All right, and moving on to critical areas, so, so the first couple of chapters of the SMP introduce critical areas as part of Appendix A. And so, the SMP has amended that to Chapter 6, which is the Environmental Protection section of the SMP. And with that, there are, there is the adopt by reference, so adopting the ordinance as the critical areas regulations are adopted under Anacortes Municipal Code Section, or And then, specifically, the reason for the adopt by reference within the Chapter, Chapter 6, and then specifically 6.6, so it refers to exempt activities that don't apply within shoreline jurisdiction. And what this means is that there are certain activities that critical areas either allow without a critical areas permit, or it's a reasonable use exemption, that still need to go through shoreline permit review. So, this is tree trimming, for example, still needs a shoreline permit. If there is a reasonable use exemption, that would be a shoreline variance. So, it directs you towards those sections that lists out the exemptions. And then, I have, so within, yeah, and I mean, this is just another section within Chapter 6 that refers to the exemptions listed. So, this Section 6.6, what I'm showing here on this slide, lists out all the sections of the critical areas regulations where they don't necessarily apply within shoreline jurisdiction. And then, there are shoreline, shoreline code sections that capture some of those exemptions or point you to, you know, the vegetation conservation section of the code for tree trimming. Yeah, so this, this captures permit, permissible activities in shoreline jurisdiction and ensures that you go through city staff for any kind of a shoreline permit. All right, and so, with the habitat assessment, when it's intersected by a FEMA floodplain, so when it's within or adjacent to a FEMA floodplain within shoreline jurisdiction, this amendment here points to the frequently flooded areas code section, and then, it goes on to look at basically the FEMA guidance for putting together a floodplain habitat assessment and mitigation plan, and so, what minimally needs to be addressed by a licensed professional for any development activity within, within a floodplain in shoreline jurisdiction. And then, yeah, another item that was identified in the gap analysis, when is a habitat assessment required? You know, just so that it's clear with city staff if there is any kind of development activity near or within a Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife Priority Habitat Species area, so PHS area, these are, these are maps that are referenced in this Anacortes Municipal Code Section 19.70.320. Yeah, that it really puts the onus on the licensed professional to determine what kind of buffer is necessary, and then, you know, what, what kind of standards does the applicant need to meet for that development activity within that area? And, yeah, and the licensed professional, this is a definition that is already captured within the critical areas regulations. So, when I talk about the codification piece, I'll talk a little bit more about that. All right, so, looking at shoreline environment designation, so, one of the proposed changes is within Ship Harbor, currently where there is an urban shoreline environment designation. And really, the impetus for this change is that originally, when this was first designated, it was an anticipated developable area that was identified by the Fidalgo Bay Environmental Impact Statement that was published back in 2000. So, this, this area anticipated either a marina or a resort, and, yeah, in the last 20 years, nothing has, has occurred under that, that level of development. So, it's really matching current land, current land use patterns in that area, yeah, looking at the existing zoning. So, the conservancy designation is more restrictive and, you know, provides a larger buffer from development, so it is consistent as, and is less of an impact, but it's still, you know, respects the natural designation, the saltwater marsh that's there in Ship Harbor.
Mr. Catherine, I have a question. Would now be a good time to bring this up?
Yeah.
What's the ownership of the piece that's been changed from urban to the mixed-use conservancy and shoreline residential?
I don't know offhand, but that is something we can listen to and report back.
I'm just curious about the, what kind of impact this has on, on a property owner there. Not that I object to the change of, change of designation, I'm just wondering how to manage, how we'll manage that process.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Rither.
Who's Libby?
Oh, Libby, hi.
Hi.
I don't have all the pictures on my screen, so we'll have to guess.
It's tough. I was just going to provide that, I believe that the owners, there's some private ownership down there, I believe that the Port of Anacortes and the City of Anacortes also have some, some ownership, so we can look into that and provide the details later.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll look into that item. And then, this is another shoreline environment designation that's been identified based on past public interest in this area. Currently, there, there is an a-proposed change, although there, there is concern with compatibility of adjacent neighboring uses, you know, any, any kind of future development impacts related to traffic and noise related to these canneries. Yeah, the shoreline environment designation, at least where the canneries are concerned with being over water, it is currently designated as a light, light industrial, light manufacturing. Yeah, so I, you know, this is kind of a good discussion topic because there has been interest in the community and looking at this further. So, I, you know, would open it up if, if there are folks that would like to discuss this, this current shoreline environment designation and any, any concerns, concerns that they have with it.
This is Frank Juretsky. The canneries have been around a long time, in most cases, longer than the homes that are built near them. Would any of these rule changes make it so that they can't operate like at night because of the noise factors?
Yeah, currently, there aren't any additional changes, yeah, specifically, you know, that prescriptive in terms of not night noise. Yeah, so, I mean, I'll talk a little bit more about aquaculture piece in a little bit, but, yeah, there hasn't been that proposed change.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Don. So, I just wanted to mention that, you know, there has been quite a bit of concern from the residential areas of the canneries and the incompatibility, if you would, with the urban versus the shoreline residential, and then, the Old Town area there. So, you know, for the most part, the residential zoning goes to the ordinary high watermark, and so, the canneries over water are all that's left in the LM zone, the light manufacturing zone. So, I think what we'll do, we'll put together some more information and bring that back at an upcoming meeting for discussion, and especially during the open public comment period, we'll have some, some good discussion on it then. Thank you.
Don and Alex, this is my Courtwright. I guess the prior chart and this chart, what is the long-term view about development, business development in these particular areas? When you switch from urban to shoreline residential, you by definition constrict the potential for business development in the, in the broadest terms. So, does the city have a perspective on economic growth from these particular areas? What they expect, how they would like, they would like to see it?
Mr. Chair, this is Don again. So, thank you, Mike, that's a great question. The previous slide, I don't know if you can go back to that one or not, Alex, but I could talk more about that one first. Yeah, so, what happens here is the changes are now consistent with the zoning changes that were made during the development regulations process. So, previously, this area, I believe, was CEM, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, which required a conditional use permit for single-family and multifamily residential. And so, through the processes, the City Council Planning Commission changed this to R2A, and so, they're now for it's more consistent with what's there, which is residential. So, we don't expect any kind of commercial development in this area, and it never matured over the length of time that it was designated CEM. At one point, there was a possible hotel and, and a couple of other structures, multifamily structures that were, were permitted, and then, those permits expired and nobody came back to try anything except everybody wanted residential. And then, on the next slide, really, the only area that is usable for any type of commercial use would be the light manufacturing area, which is from the ordinary high watermark to the... Don, so that's light manufacturing, but, you know, the canneries are existing historical uses and could potentially, you know, be rebuilt and used as some type of water, water-related or, or water-dependent type use. So, at some point in the future, that could happen for those, but they really would have nothing landward that they could use based on the zoning.
Okay, that makes sense. I was just looking, I was thinking about, okay, if the city, city in the future wanted to stimulate the economy with something beyond just residential, I get the impression that these changes, the prior change, is not a limiter in that, it's already constricted as it is.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Don, this is, this is Jeff Graff. Hey, could you, could you refresh my memory? Is, is the Gueones Channel Trail supposed to run through this area, perhaps bordering the red and the yellow or, or in the yellow area?
Great question, Jeff, yes. So, the Gueones Channel Trail plans are to go ahead and extend it from its current location along these two canneries. location along these two canneries upland. It would be in the, um, residential zone and probably partially in the urban and shoreline residential designation.
The reason for my question is, is, you know, I recall seeing some, you know, proposed ideas, residential di- or, uh, you know, uh, commercial designs where there would be, you know, perhaps opportunities for small businesses to kind of set up in certain locations along the trail to kind of, you know, bring people to the trail, bring families to hang out along the trail. I mean, would, would any changes along this, um, impact that possibility if that's something that the city would want to do in the future?
Uh, yeah, thanks for that question, Jeff. You know, we, we haven't considered that now for a while. Uh, for the most part, right now, what we're looking at is just that pedestrian corridor along the channel. Um, although, when you look at these two particular sites, if the city were to secure one of these sites and build a public pier, uh, with possibly a, a small shop or deli or coffee shop or something like that, um, then that could, that would not be prohibited based on the shoreline residential and urban, uh, designations.
Okay. Hey, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Um, yeah, thank you for that discussion. Now, that's, that's great. So we'll, we'll provide a, a little bit more information on, on where things stand right now, um, with this, this current set. So looking at, um, yeah, zoning code references within the SMP. So right now, the SMP reference, references a bunch of outdated regulations. And so with that, there is a uni- universal adoption of Title 19 Unified Development Code to capture the recent changes there. Um, and one of those changes is actually allowing, um, residential uses, uh, to, to a limited extent on the ground floor where before, within shoreline jurisdiction, they weren't allowed. So that references Chapter 16 or 19.61, the block frontage standards. Um, yeah, so just adding a little bit more flexibility there and also, uh, referencing the most recent, uh, sign, sign code that was adopted, uh, versus, yeah, the, the previous standards. And then, uh, for any commercial development, any commercial building permit that comes in, that it will now have to go through, uh, building design standards along with, you know, any development and through the rest of the city. So that's just being consistent there with the, the zoning code. And, um, a lot of the SMP def- definitions, um, so this will be as part of the codification piece, but, uh, they already exist in Title 19 right now, so a lot of them are in fact being removed. So we're moving redundancies there. One of the definitions that was missing in the SMP is that of impervious surface. So we brought that over from the city stormwater manual. And so that is regulated within the conservancy and shoreline residential, uh, jur- uh, shoreline juris- or shoreline environment designations. So that is a, a constraint for lock coverage within those two. So we needed a, needed a definition for, you know, careful administration there of that. And, um, the building height and pier substructure definition, so those are going to be covered in more detail in the next meeting. But really, the building height, uh, provision, that was moved into regulation. So just as a best practice, not to have a, a regulation in your, your definition. But yeah, those will be talked in the next, we talked about in the next meeting. Okay, so the, one of the more, um, significant changes is, is looking at, um, aquaculture. So it, it dovetails a little bit into the discussion we just had about the canary. So it is looking to, uh, address economic viability of pre-existing structures that are over water, uh, within the aquatic designation. And so this shoreline use table, uh, yeah, it's currently showing as a prohibited use. So that's changing to a conditional use, um, for above-water aquaculture projects. And, and really, the, you know, this is, this type of change, uh, just in reaching out with other jurisdictions that have considered this. The one, one jurisdiction that we, we were able to touch base with, with was the City of Shelton. So they did a minor amendment of their SMP in 2013. They were looking at, uh, over-water aquaculture systems. And, um, this is, this is a type of aquaculture that, um, is oftentimes very, very low impact. So in, in the City of Shelton's case, it is facilitating, uh, invertebrate aquaculture, so filter feeders that actually clean the water column. And since they adopted these SMP provisions in 2013, they haven't received any, any complaints from, from neighbors of, of these activities taking place. Um, yeah, it, it is a different jurisdiction, but that's, that was, um, yeah, part of the premise here. And this, this is, this type of use is, is highly encouraged by Department of Natural Resources as a way to help, help support economies. And so with that, these development regulations, so this is within the aquaculture provisions of the code, so Development Regulation 8.4.8. So it's focusing on, um, within structure activities and then looking at what kind of materials are going into this. Yeah, as, as you're looking at, you know, a strong emphasis in water quality, also looking at, you know, ways to, to, to regulate and, and, and watch for, you know, noise generation as well as vehicular traffic on, on site. And, and so with that- Could we stop here for- Absolutely. Could, could you back up one slide? Uh, one more slide? This is Jeff Graff, by the way. So we're talking about making above-water aquaculture possible as a conditional use in the urban and urban maritime locations. Is this, is this something the city is considering or is this something that the state is, um, considering and then we would adopt what the state does? Right. So the urban and urban maritime, uh, designations are already allow aquaculture as a conditional use. Okay. This change would just be waterward of the ordinary high watermark. Okay, so the above-water stuff. Right. Yeah, so it would still prohibit in-water aqua- aquaculture. Now, the locations in Anacortes where we have urban and urban maritime, where this could be a possibility, how closely do those, um, mimic what the City of Shelton was, um, you know, those areas? I mean, are we, is this an apples-to-apples comparison or is it just City of Shelton was, was a city that adopted this? They had success adopting it, but it may not be a good comparison for us? Yeah, it, I think it's a mix between the two. It's not, I don't think it's a direct apples-to-apples. Um, but they were, they were very successful in implementing it and, and not having any issues with it. Their, their end of aquaculture, um, focused on, on marinas. And I don't, I don't really foresee that taking place within Anacortes. And, uh, I think earlier drafts, um, had that as a flexibility and then we, we took that out. You know, both Watershed and the city agreed that that, that is something that, yeah, most, most likely wouldn't, wouldn't work, uh, within city limits. Okay, thank you. Yeah. All right. Okay, and, um, so with aquaculture projects, so the big emphasis here is having it completely contained within an existing structure. So if there are, um, uses of containers that they're limited to three feet in size, and if the applicant wants to go over that, that view corridors have to be preserved. Um, and the way that's demonstrated is through a, a view corridor analysis. Yeah, so that's, that's protecting upland views of this, this activity and also ensuring that, you know, the equipment is in good working condition. Yeah, that there aren't any nuisances created by, by this, any proposed use. And, um, then kind of a housekeeping item, that last bullet there, that, yeah, there's, there's no, no allowances for fish net pens. So those, those have been eliminated, you know, because that's almost always a, uh, an in-water aquaculture use, which is prohibited. So that's been taken out. And yeah, as I alluded to earlier, yeah, where would this occur? So I mean, the canneries are, are a good candidate for these co-provisions. So it's, it's looking at, um, uh, amending these as a, you know, historic, as a historic over-water structure. So these tweaks here show, you know, allowing a, a water-oriented use and then, you know, eliminating the word recreational. So it's not emphasizing recreational uses of these, but is a, a broader, broader use of, of, uh, of these structures. So, so adding those in to, and Development Regulation 5.6.1, that's the aquatic designation. So this is, this is looking at those structures. Yeah, just continuing a little further, um, this is an added regulation, just to make sure that it's consistent with the aquaculture provisions at the state level. Jeff, I, I don't know if I answered your question there. This, these, these provisions, while they're encouraged by Department of Natural Resources, this isn't by any means a requirement. This is something to just add, um, additional flexibility to, to owners along the shoreline that are in this situation. I understand. Thank you. Yeah. All right, and so looking at the, uh, codification process, uh, so this is, this is a significant piece of the puzzle. So this would be where all development regulations in shoreline juris- or in the SMP as it stands today, they go into Anacortes Municipal Section or Municipal Code, Chapter 19 dot 72. Yeah, and so those chapters listed there, so Chapter 4 is basically a goals and policies chapter. So all the goals and policies document-wide would go into the comprehensive plan, the shoreline element. And, um, yeah, it's my understanding that that would, that would take place over, over the next, um, Comp Plan Amendment docket process. So that would be something where we would, we would set that up so it would be plugged in at that time. Yeah, and really, timing-wise, I, I guess to, to start, so the, the regulations themselves would not change. It would really be formatting them as subsections within 19 dot 72. And the, the regulations would, yeah, remain unchanged. But timing-wise, that would occur after the joint public comment period. That way, we don't have two working documents that we're trying to coalesce at the same time. So we would get through the comment period, um, receive comments, make changes as necessary to the SMP, and then get that off to Ecology for their, uh, initial determination. And, um, we have received some preliminary feedback from Ecology. So the code that'll be ready for the joint public comment period and hearing that will incorporate some of that feedback from Ecology. Yeah, so it's, it's something that will, will occur after we've heard back from the formal review of, of Ecology to, to codify the SMP. All right, and then, um, so yeah, looking at the timeline, I know Libby kind of brought that up and, and covered that all. So the next, next meeting, I will talk about those second, secondary topics as well as, um, providing a little bit more information on the canneries. And it's, yeah, it sounds like the, the land, land ownership of Ship Harbor, uh, for the October 14th meeting. Also looking at, yeah, yeah, the, um, joint public comment period, which will occur, yeah, November through December with, uh, public hearing around the middle of that, that period. And then, um, yeah, moving towards, uh, towards a, a spring adoption. And yeah, with that, I'd like to open it back up for any, any further questions, uh, planning commissioners have or, or the public. That's, that's the website and, um, yeah. Thanks for listening.
Alex, this is my court right again. Have, is there a process where the landowner constituents are provided? This is reviewed with them, the businesses, the canneries, et cetera, prior to going, finalizing the process? Uh, in other words, do you get together with the businesses there that are operating? And do you talk to them with about, about it? See what their input is, one way or the other? Positive and negative? Or are they considered part of the general public, if you will?
Mr. Chair, this is Don. Great question, Mike. So I've had several conversations with the owners of the old canary buildings and we'll, we will be sharing with them the draft SMP and the potential changes as well as, uh, the, um, you know, anything that comes out of it. The gap analysis has already been sent and a link to the, uh, Shoreline Master Program draft just to many of them. But as this goes along, we will be inviting them to speak and make public comment as well.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. And are, are there any other questions from the commissioners? Perhaps, uh, before we, before we close the meeting, um, can I suggest we get a little feedback about how this one went and are there any, um, good, good things, bad things, things we could improve on for the next meeting? I know these are all a little strange. So I'd just like a little, a little, uh, chance for us to talk about that. Any, anything?
Um, Mr. Chair, if I might, this is Don.
Please, Mr. Meesmer.
Um, well, I think it went really well. Um, I think our upcoming meetings, we'll have much more discussion as we get used to this virtual world. I think it's going to even get better.
Okay. I, I think the, um, it seems to work pretty well if people just go ahead and speak up if they have a question and, um, we'll assume my, the chair has recognized them. I think it's probably more efficient that way and it's a little hard to track sometimes with the, with these video conferences. Unless that becomes a problem, let's just assume that people should feel free to chime up, chime in when they have something. Does that work for everybody?
I've got a question about our next meeting. We're going to be looking at two projects. And I'm new on, I haven't dealt with any of these sort of questions in my, on my, my time on the planning commission. Will we get some lead time on both those projects, where they are, what the scope of them is, be prior to the meeting? So we can go look at the property or anything like that?
Ms. Graed, would you like to reply to that?
Yes, thank you. The planning commission packets that will include all of the submittal, the application documents submitted by the applicant, along with a staff report and a recommendation will be coming to the commission the week before the meeting. So, so we try to do a good job in the staff report to kind of summarize all of the issues and provide.
So does that mean that we won't be site visits?
We are not proposing to conduct site visits at this time due to the COVID situation. We will include lots of pictures in the staff presentation to familiarize the commission with the area. Is that accurate, Mr. Meesmer?
Thank you, Ms. Graed. Yes. So what we're thinking is because of COVID nineteen and not getting a bunch of people together in one place, we will get pictures and video of the site. And have those prior to the presentation or during the presentation by staff.
And my recollection from previous reviews, if there's any there's any correspondence, we're usually given that ahead of time. Then, of course, during the public meeting, we take formal comments.
Correct. So we have a, an e-comment situation that will go on and we'll receive those comments up to three o'clock the day of the meeting. And then people will be able to speak during the meeting and, you know, have verbal comment period as well. We'll also have the standard fourteen day period, comment period that will be noticed. And all those comments will be compiled and just passed on to the planning commission.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to add that through the, the e-comment option that folks have or via email. Yes, we will compile any comments that come in after the staff report goes to the commission and send those to the, to the commission. So you have them. I mean, if they come in prior to three o'clock the day of the meeting, we'll get them to you as soon as possible. But we will send those electronically via email. So you might want to check your, your commission email prior to the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Jowetsky, did you get your question answered sort of?
I did. Thank, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Any other issues or things for the good of the order here?
This is Mike Courtwright again. I, Mr. Chair, Mr. Meesmer and Libby, I appreciate what you did in putting the legislative things in order. And I guess I, my takeaway is that we didn't have any major issues. So in the things that were discussed. So is the implication there that we have tacit approval of those proposed changes to the SMP? I know not officially, but we went through them. Their legislative mandates, we reviewed them. Do we have tacit approval? I know that's a loaded question. I apologize upfront.
That's a loaded question. Because, you know, they are mandated by the state, you know, we need to get them into our Shoreline Master Program. But there are several items that we will need to have further discussion on. You know, a good example of that is we're proposing to require a permit for any type of vegetation removal along the shoreline. I think that's very important. We want to have that discussion. The other discussion will be the shoreline designations on the urban versus residential area and the cannery areas. That's going to, I think, need to be a lengthy discussion with some of the neighbors and with the owners of the cannery so that we can come to a good conclusion on how that's going to work. For the most part, there aren't that many substantive changes. So just a few. Good meeting you.
Anything more? Last call?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This is Matt Kaufman. I'm sure you guys are all familiar with me now. I'm going to be sending you guys out another invite for the future meetings after this. So please keep an eye on your email for it. It actually comes from Anacortes, not from myself. So it's a little bit of an unfamiliar coming into you guys from Zoom. So just keep an eye.
So it is not, it's not a fishing expedition then?
That is correct. We're not, we're not doing the fishing on you guys.
Matt, can I just ask a question? Sorry. Does that mean we need to delete the other appointments that the commission should?
Well, I, I actually noticed that I didn't have anything for the commissioners under the panelists yet. I had you, I had Don, I had Tess. I thought I had Dave, but I might not have. So I'm going to look into that a bit more. But the commissioners are all fresh. They have not received any yet. So you guys will be receiving that. If you, there is a link on there where you can add it to your calendar and I will just add it for all the next consecutive weeks that we're going to be meeting, even some weeks that we aren't meeting. So.
Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Graff.
So, you know, as I'm digesting close to dinnertime, what Mike Courtwright just suggested, you know, maybe what would be beneficial is, I mean, we went through quite a bit of information. I think, you know, Mr. Meesmer mentioned the fact that there are going to be some discussion items that we need to have both internal and with the community. But there was a significant amount of stuff that was, went through that, you know, like Mike suggested, perhaps we have tacit agreement that those should be forwarded to the city council, right? So maybe what I'm at the end of the meeting, before we let everybody go, we just kind of roll everything up and, hey, we're coming back to items A, B, and C, but D through Z, you know, we've got tacit agreement or perhaps something like that, just to keep us focused on what would be relevant for the next time we meet.
And I think that's a good question, keeping track of items that either, that we've either discussed and disposed of or that don't really warrant any further attention. I'm not sure how we would do that mechanically.
Well, if I may. So I think what we could do, not to tackle that this evening, but to work with Alex from Watershed and put together all the legislative requirements right up front. The next meeting, we just go through them, dispose of those. And at the same time, we will have those items that need much more discussion. So just break them apart.
Yeah, we could have a quick roll up too at the end. I mean, if Mike hadn't asked the question, I mean, well, the fact that he asked the question kind of got us to, you know, what I'm kind of suggesting, we just suggesting, we just remember to do that after every meeting so that we do stay focused for the next, for the next meeting. Not necessarily suggesting we make more work for folks, but just to keep ourselves on track. We don't have to rehash something that we all kind of agreed was something worth going forward with.
Agreed. That's a great idea.
And if I forget to ask for a discussion or feedback at the end of the meeting, please remind me.
Mike will keep us on top of that.
There you go. Well, is there anything else?
If I, if I can ask a question, what would be the, what would be the process of actually doing a motion or a vote through this if we're going to do a conditional use next meeting?
Can you repeat that question, Mr. Mount? I'm not sure I understood.
Well, in terms of actually taking a vote, what is the process in, in terms of Zoom? So do we just have a roll call and everybody votes verbally? Or there's, there's, there's tools in Zoom to do that if we wanted to do it? Like raising hands or whatever?
Yeah, I would anticipate that we'll do a roll call, just like we would in an in-person meeting.
Correct.
Someone will make a motion and someone will second it and roll call vote. Does that work?
Yes.
It works for me. I'm afraid I don't want to learn any more new technology than I can avoid.
There are tools in Zoom though to raise hands. I think if we get into a public meeting and everybody, and there's more than just the commission in order to make sure that people are recognized, if we wanted to use the hand raising function so that it was a little more orderly than it might be.
Are you talking about people who want to speak?
Yes.
So you should have gotten a procedures that are from Ms. Stewart. So that is currently how it works. Mr. Kaufman will be keeping track of all those folks who are participating from the outside. And then as they raise their hand to speak, once that timeframe comes up, then Mr. Kaufman will let the chair know that so and so wants to speak. And then they'll start their conversation. They'll have three minutes. And then the next person will speak. And Mr. Kaufman will administer that process for us.
Okay.
Great. I find the more times I keep quiet, the more things come up. Last, last call, anything more here? Okay. So thank you, everybody. I, I think it went pretty well. And I'm going to formally close the meeting. We'll see you at the next, next occasion. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.